Okay, it is six o'clock PM on Tuesday, July 22, 2025. We will call the Common Council meeting to order. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Broko, please.
Middleton.
Here.
Bardo.
Here.
Romano.
Here.
Weegles.
Here.
Bachman.
Here.
Friend of yours of the minutes from our last meeting on July 8th. Were there any changes or corrections? I did make, I think I did ask for a change to be done just to notate when Tad was present, virtually. The reason for that is because he wasn't here when we took the vote on the ordinance, so we didn't have to do a voice vote, if that makes sense. So trying to cover our bases, if you will. And then I think the only other thing I think I included was the Pell study under my report was misspelled. Should be P-E-L instead of P-E-L. Any other changes or corrections? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Jennifer, seconded by Jenny for the discussion. All those favorship of the usual sign.
Can I vote?
Yes, I think you can.
Yes, I was here.
For your portion, yes. So it is unanimous. Next up is ordinance 2025-9. Do I have a motion to read by title only?
Can I vote?
Second.
Motion by Dan, seconded by Jennifer for the discussion. All those favorship of the usual sign. It is unanimous. Please read ordinance number 2025-9 by title only.
Ordinance 2025-9 in ordinance modifying chapter 71, title seven of the city of Columbia City, Indiana Municipal Chapter.
So again, this is about the truck parking on Line Street at Market, just right next to the city parking lot, and the issues with those trucks blocking vision and those kind of things. So a lot of you were involved in this, I think, in some way, shape, or form, so.
Yeah, I know I had some questions because I think, I didn't read the full newspaper, but some of the, the way it was written in the newspaper, there was some confusion on what street they were talking about.
Oh, okay.
And I know I got a call on it, and like, not Main Streets, not Old Market, it's off of Line Street. And I said, I gotta, I gotta call and have to help them understand, and I don't know where they got it, but I thought somebody sent the newspaper.
But the angled space is on Line Street, just south of Market.
Correct.
And it'd be on the east side of Line Street, right next to the city lot. So that's the only place that it's talking about, and it's to make sure that there's good line of sight for vehicles.
Yes, exactly. I want to make sure.
Yep, appreciate you pointing that out. Any other questions, comments, concerns about the ordinance? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve ordinance 2025-9 on second and final reading?
It's a move.
Second.
Motion by Tad, seconded by Jenny for the discussion. All those favorship of the usual sign. It is unanimous. Next up, I'm gonna squeeze Dale in, if that's okay with you, so.
You squeezed it pretty hard.
Yes, yes. So Dale has, Dale has a special addition, if you will, so.
Yeah, I appreciate this kind of last minute, and again, as I said to some of you prior to the meeting, I prefer to give you a little bit more time with some advanced documents, but this is kind of important. This is resolution 2025-10 for a tax abatement. It's a personal property tax abatement, which may be the last time you ever see me in front of you on, for one of these, depending on, you know, what all falls out with Senate Bill One. And then you, so you could say, well, Dale, why are you here? DOT America is, continues to be just a phenomenal success in what they do, and not only in the medical device industry, but for Columbia City. I mean, it's a unique company. Their parent company out of Germany continues to just support them as an, is impressed with what they're getting done here. Zimmer is a very big customer of theirs, and Zimmer would like for them to do more work for them. And that work will entail having to buy a $2 million vacuum chamber, and sometime, if you ever get a tour, it's, it's a pretty fascinating and interesting thing. The German parent's a little concerned about that, because while there's 64 people at some pretty decent wages working at DOT, they still have quite a few open wrecks. And so if they put this new machine in, they're gonna need to hire at least 20 people over the next year. So that's a challenge. But what the, their, their ownership would love to see is when the council supports them like you've done in the past. You've done a real property tax abatement and a personal, the last chamber they bought. And on what, on this current effort, the state of Indiana has given them a small tax credit for the new employment. And what I am asking for tonight is just a three-year personal property tax abatement, similar to the last one, which was three-year. And it may not actually mean anything, but depending if the state reverses some of the legislation they passed in April, it, it could, it could be back and forth. So I'm here tonight because should you pass this, it would go a long way for the local DOT back home in Germany.
So as a reminder, there is a lot of changes that happened to the business personal property tax at the legislature this year, and there's still, there's still discussions about tweaking here and there. So as Dale said, it may be, it may be a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of work for nothing, but at the end of the day, it is a good faith sign, for sure, to the German, to the German, to the German parent company, there we go, that we support DOT America, which we've shown historically as well, so. That's Tad.
I'd be in favor that historically they've overperformed on everything they've ever committed to, and I would certainly be in favor. If, if it does come to fruition that it's available to offer, then I'd be in favor.
Yeah, and as many of you are aware of also to pile on that, DOT America is the very first one to get their CF lines in every year.
And they continually exceed expectations.
Yep. Any other questions for Dale? Okay, so I will, I will ask if I can have a motion to read resolution number 2025-10 by title only.
So moved.
Motion by Brent, seconded by Dan for the discussion. All those favorship of the usual sign. It is unanimous. Please read resolution number 2025-10 by title only.
Resolution number 2025-10, a resolution of Columbia City Council, preventing the deduction of assessed valuation for personal property permits.
So as Dale mentioned, this is a three-year personal property abatement. So again, it's a stair-step approach, where again, assuming that business personal property stays in place, that we actually, it'll be a stair-step approach, so over the year, we'll get, over the three years, we'll get a little bit more of that tax amount, a little bit more at the pullback after the three years. If the state says, nope, it's all, it's all effectively deductible, if you will, then we would've gotten anyways. So anyways, any questions regarding the resolution?
I assume it's a 33 and a third each.
No, they're official prices.
So what we've looked at, and I've done this the last couple of times, normally, personal property is either a five or a 10-year. I've done it three to kind of just help them upfront, so it's, it's actually 100% deductible, 95 and 90, but.
Then that's it.
That's it.
Yep.
Cuts it off.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve resolution number 2025-10 and grant three years of abatement?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jennifer, seconded by Tad for the discussion. All those favorship of the usual sign. It is unanimous. Thanks, Dale. You wanna give any other updates while you're here?
Things are kind of slow, but what is nice, continues to be nice, I think I've said this the last couple of times here, small businesses in the area are still kind of fun and going strong. The Indiana Small Business Development Center comes once a month to our offices, and they have three or four people every time. And between Bright Point and our revolving loan fund, we're, you know, we're trying to do some small business loans, and, you know, we've got several clients in the Columbia City area, so that's always fun.
Great. Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, and I think it's public knowledge, you know, Amy Roberts, has, she's been a client of ours, and may do some funding to help what she's gonna do in the old ways.
Questions to Dale? Thank you, sir. Move on to policy changes. Beth, come on up.
Okay, got a couple of them in front of you here. The first one that I think is listed is quite a mouthful. Policy against harassment slash molestation of minors and vulnerable adults. That is a title that I did not come up with, but our workman's comp carrier pretty much said that we needed to come up with a policy for this. Mostly for our park department is where it started, but I wanted to go ahead and include that to any interns, part-time people that we might have too. So basically, it's been through, I had Marcia look through it a couple of times. You're probably tired of that. And then the park board did take a look at it, and they made a change or wanted a clarification that you'll see in the red that's on the first page. They wanted to know what a definition of a volunteer was. So the wellness committee went ahead and discussed this and put in a definition for that. Then on page two, there's D, the investigation and follow-up. You'll see some things that were kind of taken out. This was just some discussions between myself and Marcia of what to put in, for sure. And then basically, the rest is just information taken from other policies that deal with either harassment or molestation.
This basically just outlines the process we'll take and the process that I guess the victim and that man would take, as well as the steps that the accused would also take, I think along the way, right?
Yes.
Questions to Beth on this policy? Do I have a motion to approve the policy against harassment and molestation of minors and vulnerable adults as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jennifer, seconded by Jenny for the discussion. All those favorship of the usual sign. It is unanimous.
Okay, thank you. The second one that's listed, make sure, yes, is a retirement. 5.12 is the number, and this basically is for the public safety manual, our policy book. We have two handbooks. One is for civil, one is for public safety. So this one is for public safety, and number three is the addition to it. Basically, it was where we would like to be able to have the officer be able to retain a firearm if they meet certain restrictions, and then also if, for, we hope not, some reason the officer dies, then their family, if they still meet that criteria, could have that option.
This is a very common policy among municipalities across the board, and honestly, it's kind of been something we've been doing that we didn't realize we didn't have a policy for, and more practice in the policy, so I figured we should probably put it in the policy. So.
Exactly.
Questions to Beth? Okay, do I have a motion to, to approve policy 5.12 of retirement as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jenny, seconded by Tad for the discussion. All those favorship of the usual sign. It is unanimous.
Thank you. The next one is 5.7, and you'll see over to the right-hand side top, it does say civil. Again, we've got two holiday policies here we're putting in front of you. The first one is a civil, the second one will be public safety. Again, just some things had come up that we needed clarified, and you'll see all that in the red. The civil did not have Juneteenth in it, so we added that under G. We did have a recommendation to, under E, to add Indiana Election Day. Someone was concerned that they might think it was Ohio or Illinois, so we went ahead and put Indiana in there. The first, number one, it says actual holidays. We're trying to keep in line with a sheet that is also our holiday calendar. It has actual and observed dates on it, so we're trying to keep that language also in there. And then you'll see three and four were added, and then on the second page, B, there was one and two that was taken out, and then three, it was just a terminology issue that we wanted to change.
And the wellness committee went over this, I think, 13 times over the last year. Maybe I'm exaggerating a little bit, but went over it a lot of times, both this and the public safety.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but this is the civil one that's in front of you. Any questions regarding the civil policy? Okay, do I have a motion to approve policy 5.7 for holidays for the civil policy manual?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jennifer, seconded by Tad for the discussion. All those favorship of the usual sign. It is unanimous.
Okay, second one then here for holidays is the public safety. And again, there were some things we needed to add, as you can see in the red. And then on page two, we had just some changes with some language.
Questions for Beth? Do I have a motion to approve policy 5.7 holidays for public safety?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jenny, seconded by Brent for the discussion. All those favorship of the usual sign. It is unanimous.
Okay, thank you. The next one is the bereavement leave, and it will be the one for civil. This one, on number three, you'll notice the red word consecutive. We wanted to kind of keep in line with what number one and two said, and it had been brought to our attention, but number three did not have that in there, so we went ahead and put that in there. Then number four, we added in the red employees or spouses, great-grandparent or great-grandchild. So as we hire younger and younger, we're finding out great-grandparents are ones that are coming up, and then someone had mentioned, what about great-grandchild? So we went ahead and added those. So those are the main ones for this.
Do I have a motion to approve policy 5.8 bereavement leave for the civil policy manual?
It's a move.
Second.
Motion by Tad, seconded by Jennifer for the discussion. All those favorship of the usual sign. It is unanimous.
Okay, and then the final one here is again bereavement, and again, this one is for public safety. So you'll see in the red on A1, we have where we added or three consecutive 24-hour work shifts for fire. That language was not in there, so we felt we needed to clarify that since they do work the 24-hour shifts. And then the same for number two, we added that, and then number three also. Number four, we added again the 24-hour work shift and employee, I forgot to do the red, employee or spouse's great-grandparent or great-grandchild was added to that one.
Questions regarding this policy? Do I have a motion to approve policy 5.8 bereavement leave for the public safety manual?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jenny, seconded by Jennifer for the discussion. All those favorship of the usual sign. It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Appreciate it. Okay, next up is upcoming meeting discussions. So in our, for our schedule, November 11th is Veterans Day, which city is closed that day, city hall is closed that day, and December 23rd is usually the one where we push it back in order to get closer to the end of the year. So I'd like to maybe start off with the November 11th date, see if you all would be willing to adjust that date. Either the Monday before, the 10th, or, I'm sorry, Monday the 10th or Wednesday the 12th. Wanted to kind of get your opinions and thoughts on that. Board of Works will follow whatever it is you all want on both of these cases, so.
I could do either day, but I would prefer the 12th, possible.
I agree. 12th would be my preference.
Right?
Do the 12th.
Okay. Okay. So we will move the November 11th board and council meeting to the 12th, November 12th. And next up is the December 23rd meeting date. The suggestion from Leslie is the December 30th, if possible. So.
Everybody, do your math.
Or again, Board of Works will follow whatever you decide to do.
I'd say I'd go nowhere.
So what does the 30th, the evening of the 30th look like for the council? Good for Brent?
I don't even know yet, but fine.
I understand that.
I don't know either. That's kind of where I'm at.
It's potluck, so doesn't matter.
Okay, so we will plan to have the board and council meeting on the 30th of December rather than the 23rd of December. Okay? Okay, thank you. We will move to department head reports. Beth, we'll start with you.
Okay, sure. We have had a few changes with our shared employee clinic, so we've kind of working through that. Basically, the changes are our nurse practitioner that has been with us since the beginning of 2022 is moving on to another physician within Parkview. So we still will have the same care, and we'll still have two nurse practitioners, but we will not be having Kelsey with us at this, at that time, starting in August. So also, we had a change in our days that we offer the clinic to our employees. We no longer have Friday hours, but they disperse the four hours on Friday to during the week during the lunch hour. So it's still 20 hours. The reason they did that was because Southwest opened a clinic that our employees are eligible to go to also, and that's over off of Illinois Road. So, so we've just been working through some things with that, but employees seem to still enjoy that, that offering. Wellness Committee and Safety Committee are still meeting, and supervisor leadership networking sessions are going, and then policy updates, we're working on that very strong, so.
Questions to Beth? Thank you. Mike?
We had two storm drains that we had to fix. One was in the Eagle Park parking lot, the other one was on Columbia Parkway West. And then next week, we plan on starting Jeffrey Drive Water Main Project.
Questions to Mike? Thank you. Mike?
Our force main project was completed yesterday. They committed to the minor repairs at Jefferson, so they sent an email out today. I'll be bringing that to final payment in the next meeting. Storage tank is pretty much cleaned out. We, already was the last day they had the belt press in, and they picked it up today. Parts on order for those repairs. We're gonna hire somebody to do that, but my staff assured me that they're gonna want to do it themselves, so save a little bit of money there, and I don't have any doubts that they'll be able to do it. So I meet tomorrow with the supplier and also the contractor that's gonna do the die store. We're gonna do an onsite visit tomorrow, so that's all I've got. If you got a question.
Questions to Mike? Thank you. Tom?
Our breathing air compressor continues to give us issues. I've spoken with the mayor many times about this. This thing, our old one, that was a 50-year-old unit, and the only reason we had to get rid of it is because they quit making parts for it. You buy a newer piece of equipment, and it just, it's a joke. So eventually, we're gonna have to look at replacing this thing after, I believe, four years by years. Every time it breaks down, it's 500 bucks, I have to come fix it at minimum. So bad news.
You will see a new one in his budget for 2026.
Our cadet, our newest cadet passed public safety medical, which means he passes metaphysical, and his stuff has been sent on to Perth Board for approval, so hopefully we'll see him, you know, getting on his schedule here real soon. Toby and Zach have been working with ESO software. We got mandated, our old NIFR's reports that we've been using since I've been on at our department are no longer.
Long time.
Yes, long time. Those are no longer, we're, they're switching our software up, the reporting, and it's going to be a nightmare to get up and go, and the only company that offers it is ESO software, and of course, federal mandate, you got, we had to buy the software. It's, it's gonna be a pain in the neck for those two, and I really am proud of them for taking on that task to make sure it's a good transition for us. And I told the Board of Works earlier, I told the mayor and Leslie a while back, they moved up our truck delivery for our new engine to possibly March. We also got told not to hold our breath on that, but that's the date they're giving us now, so we'll see. And then I'm in the process of trying to figure out, get some quotes and see how much it's gonna cost one of us, that's gonna need some work. It's got a debris scraper that, on the waterway, if that makes some sense to you, so before it gets to the seals, it's got a scraper, we're gonna kind of clean the debris off that is deteriorating, and then a wear plate on the ladder itself, which means it's gonna be disassembled, replaced, but back together. Probably not gonna be cheap, much cheaper than buying a new ladder truck at this point, so we gotta do it. So other than that, things are going really well.
Questions to Tom? Thank you. Kelly?
Yeah, there's been a lot of paving going on here lately around town. Brooks Construction just wrapped up paving last Friday, finished up at Eagle Glen, that was our community crossings project that they had this year. They have a crew coming in, I think tomorrow, we do restoration work around the 80 Abrams. We have 31 of those in the project, so dirt, seed, and straw around them, and I think they have striping to do. Airmarking, I think, has the striping package for that project. I have Free Rivers Barricade coming in to do our other striping on streets around town, and then Bay and Am Sealing Stripe is doing parking stalls and things around town, the Pianopies. He's trying to work to get that bugged up. Our concrete guys did a job over on Eagle Park on Whitley Street, it's where the old drive approach went in the band room. That got taken out, and Jason, Cory, Tony, and Mitch worked on that, and we got several 50/50 sidewalks coming up too that we're gonna be working on, along with some concrete work out in cul-de-sac at the end of Westford Trail at Eagle Glen. That cul-de-sac's gonna end up paved, and new curb put in around it, and then we're gonna pour some sidewalk and do some ADAS in that area as well. Shout out to them guys, though, they've been doing a great job. Proud of the work they did. And our other crews have been, we've got four guys, Jim, Noah, Cole, and Brad have been working in the alleys, bringing stuff back, where loads are hanging out hitting cars. They've been doing a good job doing that, and they're gonna transition on those streets. That's just a few things they've been doing. Been doing a good job at that, too. Proud of their work they've been doing.
Questions to Kelly? Thank you. Marcia? Leslie?
I have nothing.
Couple of reports of individuals that aren't here for electric. They are finishing or have finished the underground, undergrounding of new distribution lines, removing all the overhead lines in the rear easement of 50 East and Ohio Street. Sean's been working with the Indiana Municipal Electric Association, or IMEA, on their lineman training institute. As I think a board member of IMEA, they're getting close to hosting kind of a new training program, if you will, at a new facility in Rensselaer, which is, which is nice to have that, not quite in our backyard, but close enough that it's not a tremendously long trip. So lots of trainings happening among our staff members in the electric department. Sean will also be going to New York with the IMPA, Indiana Municipal Power Agency Executive Committee on, regarding their bond rating, or the IMPA bond rating. So as you remember, the part of IMPA, he's a commissioner, he's the appointed commissioner, if you will, of IMPA, and so when they go and do major projects that help our electrical system, if you will, or help our electrical power grid, the electricity coming into our community, they have, they go and make sure they have a good bond rating before they go out and do bonding for major projects and stuff. So that's what he's doing here at the end of July. In Board of Works, we, the Board of Works approved a project in conjunction with Northeastern RMC on some poles along State Road Nine, where basically, if you remember last spring, I think it was last spring, the, there was a whole row of poles on State Road Nine that fell over in a windstorm. We were built onto those power lines, or onto those power poles, so in, as RMC was replacing some of the So in, as REMC was replacing some of those things, we're also going to kind of piggyback on that and replace some of our lines as well in that area. And the cost came in significantly less than what we've paid in other similar situations. So Board of Works approved that. Fiber to Eagle Park is complete and ready for SOS to install the cameras and wifi, public wifi there. Fiber installation to the new old jail, that's why we call it, now complete. Pole replacement continues and they are preparing for a busy tree trimming season this fall. Because they've done a lot of other larger projects, some of the tree trimming has not been as much of a priority, so they're creating, making that more of a priority this fall. So you'll see a lot more tree trimming from the electric department. From Terry, all equipment, as mentioned, installed in the Eagle Park server room and the cameras are up and public wifi should be operational sometime, potentially this week or next week. Him and Matt, he and Matt worked on the Eagle Park welcome sign that's there where the old high school sign used to be at the end, the old entrance, if you will, of the high school. They have a few software updates that have to happen, but they're hoping that maybe within the next week or two, that will be back, that will be up and operational and be a good welcoming for, you know, last couple of weeks at the Aquatic Center and certainly for Eagle Park. And they've been, Terry's been replacing several UPSs or universal power supplies at different city locations. For the parks, again, Eagle Park, as they talked about, but JFL equipment was passed out and practices start August 4th. City Slam, which is the softball fundraiser, is on July 26th and 27th. That's pretty much totality of Matt's update. And Chip gave an update regarding just some of the different projects, the trail project, for instance. They, they pull off because they had something else they had to be at. They're going to get back on it. Basically, the, there, I would say they're somewhere around 65 to 70% complete. They still have some stuff left on Main Street. They have to put in the pedestrian island. Apparently, they're going to be able to do that or can do that or will do that with both lanes traffic happening still. NDOT, I think, is making it that way. So I don't know how they're going to do it, but I'm, I don't get paid to decide that. So long story short, is they'll figure that out and there will be a little bit of congestion in that area while they do that pedestrian island. But still some work to do around the dairy barn and the railroad is still kind of to be determined. As you remember, we thought we had an answer with railroad and then they came back and finally gave us a price, which was a half a million dollars. We don't have a half a million dollars for that. So we're working with our engineers to come up with an alternative solution. They think they may have one, but they're testing it out and making sure that it fits ADA requirements and all that kind of stuff, so. And then he also did some wheat spraying around the city, so. For, oh, he's here, I don't need to report for Tom because he's already reported. Gary, there we go. Four H Fair Week and Parade went well. He gave a shout out to his guys regarding the officer presence at the fair. It didn't go unnoticed or it went noticed, that's another way of saying that. Officer Sturgis is in his 12th week at the academy and still doing well. Police Department is still accepting applications for the patrol officer positions. I think there's three available right now and the deadline to apply is August 1st at 4:00 PM, so spread the word if you know of anybody that has an interest in being a police officer. Officer Branicki is at SRO School. They're making some adjustments for some lead positions in the dispatch. And then the Wheels of Whitley event is going to be taking place on, I think it's Saturday, August 2nd, from 3:30 to 8:00 PM. As for me, let's get there. We've just been working on a whole plethora of issues and things that are coming up. Appreciate the viewer that were able to attend the employee appreciation luncheon. I think that went pretty well. And appreciate Leslie for all of her work on putting together, getting all the food and all the kind of great stuff. She did great on that. Working on, yes, or multiple issues. We had a meeting last week between Gary and Scott and I on some ordinance code enforcement and stuff. We, we also worked, Leslie and Sally and Gary and I worked on some comp time, flex times type policy stuff, changes that will eventually come in front of you. And we're working on kind of what we want in the GIS position, since our GIS individual left, actually moved to a completely different state. So we're getting ready to put that out, but we want to make sure that the job description adequately reflects what we want out of a GIS position. And then on the 30th and 31st and 1st, the end of next week, I will be at the Indiana Conference of Mayors. But, you know, you can always get ahold of me on email or text or phone call. I think that's all I have for right now. Dan?
I guess for people watching, I just encourage people to come downtown and visit our restaurants that we have available. I've kind of become a food expert. I like it. Just saying, you know, we got some really good quality restaurants downtown and would like to encourage people to come visit those because we've got some really good things happening now and, you know, we want to keep it. So if anybody out there wants to visit our restaurant, we've got a lot of choices now, so just encourage that. I enjoy all of them so far, the ones I've had the privilege of visiting. Other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Nothing.
Tad?
Nothing.
Jenny?
Nothing.
Brent?
Nothing.
Okay, we have no press. Anybody from the audience? Would you like to speak? That's my name?
Well, I'd just like to say thank you.
Okay, come on up and name an address. I know who you are, but name an address for the record, please.
Lisa O'Dell, I live at 317 North Chauncey Street and I just want to thank the mayor for trying to protect our historic sidewalks from being dug up by SURF. They came again yesterday, tried to do it again.
Oh, they did?
Yes. Because the tech never read the notes that he was given. So as long as they keep showing up when either my husband and I are home, we'll be able to save that historic sidewalk.
Do you want me to contact SURF again to just make sure that they, I mean, I'm happy to contact them again because they assured me that they'd be digging underneath and come back up with the conduit, if you will.
Yes, I don't think that that information transferred to the people actually doing the job.
Doing the work, okay.
Because they sent the person that they would normally send to lay a line.
Okay.
And then later, somebody would come and dig it in. But in our case, the boring device needs to come first and then the installation.
Okay, I will get in contact with them again. I apologize. I thought we had it nipped, but it obviously did not make it down the line, so.
And just listening to your stuff tonight, is there any more information on where the trails are going to be and where we can enjoy those?
Sure. So the trail that is being built right now goes from the high school, the new high school, across the Blue River. We have a new bridge there. And then it kind of goes across Radio Road, snakes its way up to Line Street, goes down Line Street to Vine Street. So there's a lot of construction on the south side there. That's, and again, that, that one is, like I said, about 60 to 70% done. The majority of that path is actually, is usable, is being used now, so you're free to walk that. Future trail projects haven't been determined at this point, but that's the one that is being constructed right now.
I think I was asking something more simply is how do we find them and where's the information to use them?
Okay, I apologize. So now I understand. On the, on the park website, we do have some of those, some of those trails that are out, that are laid out, not only the actual Blue River Trail, but also some of the trails that are inside the woods. There's some mountain bike trails in there, some hiking trails, things like that. So that's, that's probably the best place to access those. The new trail has not been added to the map yet, I don't think, but once it's completed, we'll add that to the map.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything else with the other cause? Okay, we will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.